We'll call the Oatana City Council meeting for Tuesday, May 6th. To order, may we have roll call, Jeanette?
Councilmember Spendenby.
Here.
Trulson, Dodson.
Here.
Schultz.
Here.
Burbank.
Here.
Rainey.
Here.
Abraham.
Here.
And Mayor Coontz.
Here.
We have six of the council and the mayor present.
Thank you. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. The pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to welcome everyone here tonight for this meeting, and with that, we do have approval of the agenda, which there are no additions or corrections. Look for a motion for approval. Motion by Greg. Second by Brent. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved. And we move out to the mayor, and we have some recognition here tonight.
Thank you, Les. And April 1st of May is always the time we do our reappointments to sports, and first we'll start off by thanking the members that are here for their service. Eric, if I can get you to come up. City of Oatana, the mayor, the city council, request with sincere appreciation and deep gratitude to Mayor Anderson for three-plus years of service on the public library. Thank you very, very much. If you put your hand, you're going to get quite a lot of recognition. Angela? Thank you very much. City of Oatana, the mayor, the city council, request with sincere appreciation and deep gratitude to Admiral Sager for six years of service on the Oatana Public Library. Thank you very, very much. Appreciate it. Steve Jessup, I don't think is here tonight, but the city of Oatana, mayor of the city council, request with sincere appreciation and deep gratitude to Steve and Steve Jessup for nine years of service on planning commission. Roger Wareheim is not there either. The city of Oatana, mayor of the city council, request with sincere appreciation and deep gratitude to Roger Wareheim for six years of service on the parking and recor.
So I think those two both coach.
Yusoff, mayor of the city council, request with sincere appreciation and deep gratitude to Yusoff for two years of service on your commission. Mayor of the city council, request with sincere appreciation and deep gratitude to Don Jaitman for eight years of service on his catering. Is John there? Mayor of the city council, request with sincere appreciation and deep gratitude to Michael McGarrett for eight years of service on his catering. And these plaques will be sent to those people that weren't able to attend tonight. Mayor of the city council, request with sincere appreciation and deep gratitude to Dennis Covista for six years of service on downtown parking and advisory committee. Mayor of the city council, request with sincere appreciation and deep gratitude to Diane Randall for two years of service on the downtown parking and advisory committee.
And the last one?
Mayor of the city council, request with sincere appreciation and deep gratitude to Jerry Green for six years of service on the airport commission. And in front of you, for the city council's approval, we have some people that have agreed to do a continuous terms on it, so West Hills Commission, Graninoy, Public Service Commission, Chris Cousins, planning commission, Westeen, planning commission, Suti Maygru, parking director, Chris Kudzu, human rights, Fred Matura, human rights, Laura Mendez, housing redevelopment, Datsi Rossi, downtown parking, Greg Graves, airport commission, Ron Kingalar, airport commission, Sharon West. So I would ask for the council to approve those for reappoint.
So moved.
Do we have a motion by Nate to approve? Do we have a second to that?
A second.
Second by Kevin Rainey. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved. Thank you.
And for the new members, for the new members to serve, and if you're here, please come up and we'll do the office office. Library board, Mary Thompson. Library board, Dave Marko. Planning commission, Kerry Stefford. Parking director, Greg Lewis. And if they're not here tonight, when they have their board meetings, we'll do the office office at their board meetings. Human rights commission, Edgar Chrisain. Jay Creek commission, Dave Graham. Jay Creek commission, there's one opening, so anybody out in the general public that wants to serve on the Jay Creek commission, either contact your Baltimore, or contact your mayor. Downtown parking, Tom Cashman. Downtown parking, there will. Airport commission, Scott Moes. Civil service, fire department, Barry Canovis, and Dallas is here. Civil service, fire department, Dallas Catch.
Stand in this direction, so the camera can see you. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. Better get the right slip. I won't. Aye. Say your name.
Terry Satterfield.
Do solemnly swear that I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the state of Minnesota.
Constitution of the state of Minnesota.
The laws of the city of Oatana.
The laws of the city of Oatana.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties.
Of the office of?
Library board.
Civil service board.
Of the city of Oatana.
City of Oatana.
To which I have been appointed.
To which I have been appointed.
For the best of my knowledge, ability, so help my God.
For the best of my knowledge, ability, so help my God.
Thank you very much for saying yes. I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
I'd like to make it right, did we get a motion for, I'd asked for a motion to approve the new board members that serve on commission.
We have a request for a motion. What is the council's wishes?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Dave Burbank to approve. Do we have a second to that?
Second.
Second by Greg Schultz. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
With that, we will move on to 1.5 Local Board of Appeals and Equalization reconvene the meeting, and we'll go to bill.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and members of the Board of Appeal and Equalization. Tonight, I submitted to each one of you a 2014 assessment report from the Steel County Assessor. Tonight, I would just like to report back on those people that appeared at the first meeting of April 21st, 2014, and our recommendations. The first person on the list was Brian Langland at 1430 Canterbury Place Southeast. Praise her. With me tonight, I should say, is Tyler Dearson. She does a lot of the, does the appraisals for the city of Oatana, and she contacted Brian. And the second person on the list, too, Seth and Joanne Madoll at 1480 Canterbury Place Southeast. They declined to continue their appeal after discussing it with them on the phone, so we are recommending no change for those two properties with the ability to continue on to this county board of equalization. The third person on the list is Michael O'Neil at 1243 Robin Hood Lane Southeast. Tyler did physically inspect this property on April 23rd, and her recommendation is no change. The fourth person on the list is Roger Plath. There are multiple parcels, including his homestead and some vacant lots. We're continuing dialogue with Roger, and we are listing him on the list, having appeared to keep his appeal options open, so that we can continue our dialogue. And the fifth person is Karen Scove at 763 Seventeenth Street Southeast. We physically reviewed that property on April 22nd, and we are recommending an adjustment from 170,400 to 168,100. Those are the people that appeared on the first meeting. The second pages, four pages, are a list of all those properties that we have reviewed since we sent out property value notices. That's a complete list, including those people that are, that I had previously mentioned. They are on this list, and anybody that talked to us or reviewed are on this list to keep their appeal options open. I would offer this as a record of, for the local board of appeals for the city of Oatana for 2014, so that these people can keep their appeal options open, and ask for you to approve the changes we've made.
Okay. I appreciate that. I'm going to open up. If anyone wants to comment, please come forward and sign in.
Mike O'Neil, 1243 Robin Hood Lane. First of all, I'd like to make a correction to Bill's statement. I did have a conversation with Tyler.
Okay.
She sent me a letter, called me, and it says, "I am appealing it, so I would like to be recorded as appealing my appraisal." I don't believe there should be a $37,300 swing in the evaluation in four years, and all of this occurred in the last three years. So either something was wrong prior, or something is wrong now. I gave you the details before, so I would ask that you not approve anything due with my property until the appeal process has been done.
You do have one last?
Yes, I do.
Board to?
I verbally told Tyler I would be at that meeting as well.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Chair, if I may, he is on the list as completing as being an appellant, so he does have his right to continue on to the county board.
Okay.
If I misspoke, I apologize for that.
Anyone else? Seeing none, what is the council's wishes?
Motion to close the public hearing.
We have a motion to close the public hearing. Do we have a second to that?
Second.
Second by Brent. Motion by Kevin, second by Brent. Any further discussion here? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing is closed. Now, what is the council's wishes as to the request by our assessor? What is the council's wishes?
Make a motion, we approve, noting the?
The exceptions.
The exceptions in the open appeals.
We have a note, approval or motion by Nate Dodson. Do we have a second to that?
Second.
Second by Greg Schultz, and this is to approve noting the appeal of Mike O'Neil. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved. Thank you. And with that, we need a motion to close the local board of appeals' annual meeting.
So moved.
Motion by Nate to close the meeting. Do we have a second to that?
Second.
Second by Greg. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This meeting is closed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and members of the board.
With that, we will move on to item 1.6.1, misconduct of franchise agreement, charter commission, and with that, we will go to Chris.
Thank you, Les. As you know, we had a study session earlier tonight where our attorney, Bob Vos, had presented a proposed settlement agreement that addresses the franchise violations. I want to ask Bob to step forward and discuss that for council tonight.
Thank you. Chair, mayor, and council members, Bob Vos, Kennedy and Graven, nice to be here again. As Chris indicated, we've discussed the terms of a proposed settlement agreement. I guess with your indulgence, I would hit the highlights of that proposed settlement agreement. I will say, because I mentioned it during the work session, that I do now have a signed copy of the agreement from the company, so it is a firm proposed settlement that I can go through. One comment before I do that, though, about process. This is teed up tonight as a public hearing. The public hearing that's before you is contemplated by the cable franchise the city had issued to charter, and essentially, if you'd allow me to summarize, what the franchise says is that in the event the city finds a violation of the franchise, gives notice to the company of a violation of the franchise, and the company doesn't agree, does not agree that they have violated the franchise in some way, they then have the right to have a hearing, their due process, their day in court, in effect, in front of you, and that is what you opened previously and has been continued to tonight. Given that we have, as of Friday, worked out a settlement, a proposed settlement of the dispute, there would not be a need for you to take testimony either from me or have me introduce evidence, or the company's counsel, Jane Bremer, is here tonight as well. There wouldn't be a need for that in the event you're inclined to proceed with the settlement. Their day in court, their due process would be covered, as you, if you would, by the terms of the settlement. So process-wise, you would not need to go ahead and take testimony in the event you're inclined to proceed with the settlement. So I will then lay out the four corners of the settlement and respond to questions or move forward as you, as you want. Does that sound good?
Thank you. Questions from the council? Basically, what this does is instead of a misconduct, it's now an agreement that we do have, and it is written and signed by the company, so it's now in our court to decide what we would like to do. Thank you. And with that, what is the council's wishes?
I'd make a motion, we accept the settlement agreement.
We have a motion by Nate Dodson to accept the settlement agreement. Do we have a second to that?
Second.
Second by, I'll go with Dave this time. Dave Burbank, second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's been approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, the next item on the agenda is 1.6, oh, I'm seeing, 1.7, the financial report. With that, we'll ask Greg to read the financial statement.
Here's a recap of the financial statement. Checks issued over 20,000. Our $24,423 to Hesleton Construction, the final payment on the school street project. $72,952 to the League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust, the quarterly workers' compensation premium. $3,775 to MCF Lino Lakes Correctional Facility Work Crew. $60,504 to Oatana Ford for two Ford interceptors for the police department. $669,671 to Oatana Public Utilities, of which $617,000 is reimbursements for the Virocon improvements, and $52,671 are a refund for overpayment for flood mitigation projects. $48,288 to the Steel County Auditor for the first quarter LEC costs. $38,297 to Steel County Treasurer for property taxes. $132,139 to Visu Sewer Inc. for sanitary sewer slip lining, and other expenditures of $202,915 for a subtotal of $1,279,967. Added to that are the Section 8 payments of $61,611 per total expenditures presented for approval of $1,341,578.
Thank you, Greg. And what is the council's wishes?
Motion for the bills.
Motion by Kevin Rainey to pay the bills. Do you have a second to that?
That was Brent. That was Brent.
Oh, I'm sorry. I saw him smiling and waving his whip, so. So it was by Brent. Do we have a second to that?
Second.
Second by Nate. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's been approved. Thank you, Greg. With that, we'll move on to the consent agenda items, which are minutes of meetings, permits, requests, event permits, et cetera, all wrapped into one motion, and what is the council's wishes on this?
Make a motion, we approve.
We have a motion by Nate to approve. Do we have a second to that?
Second.
Second by Greg Schultz. Any further discussion on this, on any of the items?
I just wanted to note my involvement with the Steel County Free Fair.
Thank you. With that, any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved. Moving down to action items, we got 3.1, garbage and refuse hauling license, advanced disposal of Rochester with two trucks, and we'll go to Chris with that.
Thank you, Les. We have received the necessary documentation on this license, and staff would recommend approval.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? Seeing none, what is the council's wishes?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve by?
Me.
Nate? Do you have a second to that?
Second.
Second by Kevin. I heard you this time. Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved also. Moving on to 3.4.1, proposed ordinance, 3-14, elected official salary amounts, and this will go to Chris again.
Thank you, Les. As you know, the council's had a couple of study sessions on this issue, and it is one that's, I think it's a sensitive one for all elected officials, but it's been a significant amount of time since we've last had, looked at salaries for council and mayor. It's been since 1996, I believe, and what is proposed before you is just a modest increase in the salaries. I think it would make a point that having some modest salary also allows other, more people to participate in the mayor and council. If you have your own business, or if you have to take time off of work, this salary, you know, somewhat compensates for some of that, some of that loss. And so I think it's certainly a modest amount and one that is well-deserved by a hard-working mayor and council. They have more than the first and third Tuesdays. We have many study sessions, weekend sessions, evening training, so there's a significant amount of time put in by our elected officials, so. And I would point out that this would not take effect until after January 1st of 2015.
Thank you, Chris. Questions or comments from the council? Seeing none, what is the council's wishes?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Greg Schultz to approve. Do we have a second to that?
A second.
Second by Dave Burbank. Any further discussion on this?
I think the only thing I would add is I, while it's very difficult to give yourself a raise, I certainly feel it's, it's appropriate to give the vice president of the council and the mayor a raise. They do a lot more than the rest of the council, and are very deserving of an increase in salary. The rest of the council, do I feel were underpaid? No, but given the fact that the increase for the other positions, I think are warranted.
Thank you. You know, one of the other things is that it's not just the meetings that you attend, it's preparing for them. That takes a lot of time, having to go look at the site if you need to, having to answer questions to public if you need, et cetera, so. We do have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved unanimously, so. With that, thank you. Now, we'll move on to ordinance, proposed ordinance, 3.14. I'm sorry, we got that. Oh, I'm sorry, and that was an ordinance, so we need to go by roll call.
Yep, yes. Councilmember Spendenby.
Aye.
Dodson.
Aye.
Schultz.
Aye.
Burbank.
Aye.
Rainey.
Aye.
Abraham.
Aye. Thank you. That has been approved. And now, we will move on to Resolution 24-14, support applicant for Minnesota Investment Fund grant for three projects. Dyken Applied, Johnston's, and Vision Processing. With that, we go to Troy.
Yeah, we've had a few announcements by some of our local businesses. Vision Processing Technologies, Dyken Applied, and Johnston's have all announced business expansion plans in Oatana. In all the expansion projects, the city is assisting each of the companies in pursuing state incentives for their projects. The Minnesota Investment Fund is one of those incentives that each of the projects is eligible to apply for. The city applied for this incentive on behalf of Virocon for their expansion project last summer. Since the city can only apply once between July 1st and June 30th, the city's not eligible to apply again until July. The Economic Development Authority, the Housing Redevelopment Authority, and Steel County are all eligible and willing to apply for, on behalf of these businesses, for their expansion projects. To do this, the city must pass a resolution supporting these applications. The city's consultant, Advanced Resources, will be responsible for completing the applications for the EDA, HRA, and Steel County. There are consulting costs to put together the applications, and those costs will be paid for by the EDA's consulting budget, and staff would recommend approval of the resolution regarding the support of the Minnesota Investment Fund applications.
Thank you, Troy. Any questions from the council? What is the council's wishes?
Motion to approve, Resolution 24-14.
We have a motion by Brent to approve the resolution. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Nate Dodson. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved. Thank you. Moving on to 3.52, Resolution 2614, approved bids and award contract for 2014 street and utility project, and that we'll go to, that would be Kyle?
Kyle?
Good evening. Last Wednesday, we received bids for the 2014 street and utility project, our project number 14001. We received five competitive bids, and the lowest responsible bidder was Crane Creek Asphalt of Faribault, Minnesota. This is the street project largely around Wilson School, and then the overlays, and then a small section of reconstruct on 16th Street Northeast, and staff recommends approval.
Thank you. Questions from the council? What is the council's wishes?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Greg Schultz to approve. Do we have a second to that?
Second.
Second by Nate Dodson. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved. Moving on to Resolution 27-14, approved bids and award contract for 2014 crack ceiling project, and again, Kyle?
This project is a new one for us. We have not in the past done any crack ceiling, but as you recall, we have some additional funds for preventative maintenance activities, so we are recommending a crack ceiling in advance of our seal coating operations. We received five bids on this, and the lowest responsible bidder was Asphalt Surface Technologies of St. Cloud, Minnesota. They were under the engineer's estimate, and we recommend approval.
Thank you, Kyle. Questions from the council? Chair is looking for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Kevin?
Second.
But Kevin, we have a second.
Second.
Second by Brent. Any further discussion there? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved also. Moving on to miscellaneous items, we have 3.6.1, authorization for purchase of snowblower. Kyle?
As you recall, in our 2014 CIP, we had the replacement of our snowblower, which is used to load the snow from downtown areas and areas where we can't allow the snow to accumulate. We're proposing to trade in Unit 224, which is a 1981 snowgo, and Unit 201, which is a 1991 snowgo, and then the replace, the proposed replacement is a 2014 snowgo. So we're trading in two snowgoes for one snowgo. We selected snowgo for a number of reasons. One, they are guaranteeing us a minimum residual price or value at five years of $50,727.25. I like to say that's the floor. We're going to take good care of it, and we're going to get more than that. And then they also allowed $10,000 for trade-in on Unit 224, and $15,000 for trade-in on Unit 201. So we were able to come in under budget at $117,335, and we recommend approval.
Thank you. And we're going to get this in case we have more snow this spring yet.
Yep, it's perfect timing.
Okay. Thank you. What is the council's wishes?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Nate to approve. Do we have a second to that?
Second.
Second by Dave Burbank. Any further discussion there? Any further discussion there? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved also. Moving on to resolution, authorization to purchase a two-ton truck and body, number is 3.6.2. And again, we're back to Kyle.
Good evening. This is also an item from the 2014 CIP. Unit 237 is being proposed for replacement. It's a 1992 Ford F-800 truck. We are proposing to replace that with a 2014 Freightliner at a cost of $83,631.60 for the chassis, and then a truck body from Universal Truck and Equipment, and that body at $85,085 for a total cost of $168,716.60. This is the, at the last study session, we talked with Steve Mo, the interim street superintendent, and this is the vehicle he's replacing. It is different than the unit it's replacing. This will be a little bit wider front plow, an underbody scraper, and a side wing. So it will be a different-looking plow truck than what we currently use. And Unit 237 will be sold on min-bid or in a similar public manner, and we recommend approval.
Thank you. And this is just a two-axle truck instead of a three-axle truck also, isn't it?
Well, it would be a single axle, a single rear axle. So we evaluated different trucks, and we selected the Freightliner based on its ability to carry the equipment we wanted underneath it, and also it had a significantly tighter turning radius when we took it out to some of the cul-de-sacs and tried it out. So it turns a lot sharper.
Thank you. Questions from the council? What is the council's wishes?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Greg Schultz to approve. Do we have a second to that?
Second.
Second by Dave Burbank. Any further discussion there? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved also. Next one is 3.6.3, update employment policy and process manual, and we'll go to Lynn.
Good evening. I bring forth some policy changes that we have in our personnel policy manual that I'd like updated. And the first update is from Section 3, the recruitment selection appointment. This is incorporating my position since I've been here, and also incorporating our online application system. And 3.2, the physical examinations, I'm removing the department head to receive the information from the clinic, and I will receive those and file them in our confidential files. And 3.3, city employee badges. Steel County does, they could make our badges for us, our employee badges, so I had to update that section with changes that they made at the county. Layoff, 3.9, we incorporated a timeline for layoff recalls. And 6.1, removal of $60 contribution towards part-time employment to receive on health insurance benefits. This is a minimal amount to the insurance premiums that we receive, and it's, we have so many other options out there that are more reasonable costs for part-time employees, so I ask that we remove that.
Thank you, Lynn. Any questions from the council?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Nate to approve. Do we have a second to that?
Second.
Second by Kevin Rainey. Any further discussion there? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved also. Next one is 3.6.5, approved bids and award contract for 2014 Monroe Springs Project. We have a request tabled, so with that, we'll talk to, ask Kyle.
Staff's recommending tabling until the May 20th meeting for consideration.
Okay, thank you. So what is the council's wishes?
Motion to table.
We have a motion to table by Kevin. Do we have a second to that?
Second.
Second by Brent Svenby. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been tabled until our next meeting, March 20th. And with that, we will move on to 3.6.6, authorization to purchase property at 215 South Walnut Avenue. And that we'll go to Troy.
Before that, we do have the same recommendation on the flood demolition grant quotes, as well as we're recommending to have that tabled until the next meeting on May 20th.
So this you want tabled until May 20?
No, 3.6.4, it got skipped there.
Oh, I'm sorry. Flood demolition grant, I'm sorry. We'll go back to that one right now. And you wish to table that?
Yep.
Okay. Chair is looking for a motion to table.
So moved.
We have a motion by Dave to table. Do we have a second to that?
Second.
Second by Kevin Rainey. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been tabled also. Now we will move on to 3.6.6, authorization to purchase property.
In June of last year, the DNR awarded the city $500,000 in additional grant money for removal of homes in the floodplain. These funds were appropriated due to the 2010 flood event, and covers 100% of the costs associated with the purchase and removal of homes within the floodplain. The city has purchased and removed homes at 223 and 321 Le Mon Road already, and has purchased the properties at 215, 305, and 317 Le Mon Road using these additional funds. These funds must be used by June 30th of this year. The grant program is a voluntary program, and certain criteria must be met. The city has an agreement with the property owner at 215 South Walnut to purchase the property for $100,000. The property is a triplex with a detached garage, and the closing for the property would occur on or before June 30th. There is approximately $80,000 remaining in the grant that would be put towards the purchase and demolition of this property. The Housing and Redevelopment Authority has agreed to pay the remaining amount to purchase and demolish the structures, which is estimated to be approximately $40,000. And Owatonna Public Utilities does have a need for additional parking in the area as part of their repurposing of the plant. OPU is willing to pay for the construction of a public parking lot if the city will purchase and remove the structures. The basement of the triplex received water during the 2010 flood event. The city has removed 10 houses in the area, and the best long-term plan for the area is to remove homes for which the land has a public purpose for. Since OPU has a need for additional parking, and have cited this lot as one to assist in creating public parking, this property was pursued for the grant. This would be a public parking lot, and would be owned and maintained by the city. There's no plan to use funds from the city budget, as it is anticipated that all the funds would be, for this project, would be covered by the grant, the HRA, and Owatonna Public Utilities. City will have to upfront the out-of-pocket expenses before being reimbursed by the grant. And in the end, the property would be a public parking lot, so the city would be responsible for maintaining the parking lot. Staff would recommend approval of the purchase and removal of the structures at 215 South Walnut.
Thank you, Troy. Questions from the council? What is the council's wishes?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Dave Burbank to approve. Do we have a second to that?
Second.
Second by Greg Schultz. Any further discussion here? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved also. Now we'll move on to public comment, and if anyone in the audience wishes to speak on any item not on the agenda, we will give you two minutes. Please come in and sign up, sign in at the mic, and...
I wasn't planning on coming back tonight, but in the study session regarding the issuing of franchises, your consultant made a statement that the reason we're not publishing our intent is we don't want to have a too close of a window, he referred to would be a close window for Jaguar to comply with. So I went back and checked, and your intent that you publish has to have a closing date for submission of applications, and that closing date can't be any less than 20 days. There isn't any outside. So I wanted to correct things and have you understand that you can publish intent, you can leave it very open, and the point of that would be, the point of all of this is to bring competition, not to just work it out with one other player. If there's one other player that's going to give us a better deal than Jaguar, that's what we want. But if you don't publish your intent, they're not going to come. There's also a clause in here that says sending it out to the other players. So I'm going to ask you again, appoint a commission of public members that care about this, and will work on it, and get it moving forward and getting it done, since you've now agreed that you'll perhaps settle the renewal by the 15th of October. That gives us a window where you could publish your intent. We know what we want for our community. We need to tell the players in the cable TV business what we would like, and make them aware we're open for consideration on their part to come and do business with us. To my knowledge, and I don't think we can prove that we have published, we've done one legal thing to bring competition to this community, and the very first step is to publish the intent. Your consultant told you you have to publish intent, but I believe he was mistaken when he said that causes a very short window for Jaguar to react to. It's a very open window. But until you've published it, the other players don't know what you're interested. So I would ask you to please consider appointing a public commission of members to work on this in the community, and perhaps even reconsider who you're using as a consultant, so that we get competition in this community as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Dolleen Niles, and I'm with JJD Companies. And I just called in earlier to see if I could drop off a little information about our company. We, it was a little surprised that the bid got transferred to next week, so I think, having been on city council myself for 18 years, I can understand that you guys might have some questions. So we just did up a little thing about our company, and so you'd have time to look at that before the next meeting. Is it okay if I pass that?
Just hand it over here, and I'll pass them out.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll move on to council comment, and we'll start with Brent.
Nothing this evening?
Nothing tonight. And Raymond is not here. Nate?
Nothing to add.
Greg?
Nothing tonight.
Dave?
Nothing from Ward 3.
Kevin?
Nothing tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
I would just like to say thank you to the people that have volunteered to serve on the boards and committees. It's a little bit of a time commitment, but it sure benefits the city council, so thanks to all those that volunteered.
Thank you. Chris?
Just a couple items. And for the record, I did send letters to, I believe it was four cable companies, letting them know that our cable franchise was up and that we'd invite them to apply. So those letters did go out. Moving on to some other things, on tomorrow, May 7th, at the Arts Center, the SMURPA, the Southern Minnesota Park and Recreation Association, is hosting a speaker that you all have been invited to, and I think we have a number of councils signed up for that. Our next coffee with the council will be Saturday, May 10th, from 8:30 to 9:30 at the Colonel Restaurant. There will also be an orphanage play next Saturday, May 17th, at 3 o'clock in the Arts Center. And then Senior Place is hosting a pancake breakfast on Sunday, May 18th, from 8:00 to 12:30, and it is at... At the Eagles? At the Eagles. So, some fun things on hand. That's all I have.
What time is that on tomorrow? What time is that?
6:30.
6:30 PM.
At the Arts Center. Yep.
Thank you. And I have nothing further, so the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by Kevin. Do we have a second?[1790.66]